Well, good evening, everybody. I'd like to open up the county commission meeting for January 16, 2024. I believe we've gotten all the cold weather out of the winter out our way. So I'm just gonna jinx this with that.
I think you lie a lot.
Sorry about jinxing us and Rob, sorry about having two years no duties. But I'd like to call the meeting to order Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Vera.
Here.
Commissioner Gosar also here. If you would stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so item three, public hearings. The first of the public hearings is the amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution, modifying the boundary of the aquifer protection overlay zone or APOS on the official zoning map, an amendment to the text relating to future modifications of the APOS boundary. I'd like to entertain anybody who'd like to make a comment in the room, and then we'll go online if there is anybody who'd like to make an APOS comment in there. It doesn't appear so, so how about online?
What person we just said?
Yeah. Last call for APOS amendment comments of the public hearing. Commissioners entertain a motion to close that public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all close, same side. That motion carries. Amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution pertaining to accessory dwellings will open that public hearing. The amendment to the Albany County zoning resolution pertaining to accessory dwellings. Anybody in the room like to make a comment about that? How about online? Last call in the room and online. Commissioners entertain a motion to close that public comment.
So moved.
Second.
We moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing, seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. And the final public hearing is amendments to the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Resolution pertaining to subdivision access standards. Let's do it one more time in the room. And then how about online? So last call for amendments to the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Resolution pertaining to subdivision access standards, online and in the room. Commissioners entertain a motion to close that public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item four, comments from the public. Would anybody like to make a public comment? And if you're online and you'd like to make a public comment, just unmute yourself or raise your hand. We'll try to get you as soon as possible. How about last call in person and online? You can entertain a motion to close the public comment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Five disclosures. Commissioner Vera.
I have none.
Commissioner Jones.
I believe so.
I don't have any either. Six considerations of changes on the agenda. Jennifer.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioner. I would like to add an item, which I gave you a copy of, so you have it already, but I just put it on your desk. It's present for approval asbestos remediation estimates for the Public Health Building and a decision on flooring for the additional offices in that building.
Where would you like that, Jennifer?
Anywhere. Kim is here, so I have no preference.
Is that the only item you're here for, Kim?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, so you could.
I'm here to.
Can we go to 10A on that one, please? All right, Kayla, please.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I have to, on number 36, approved payroll vouchers for December 2023. That's not correct, it should be January 2024. It's just an update.
So which one, 24?
On number 36, yeah.
For the payroll vouchers.
Thank you, Kayla. Any other changes on the agenda? All right, so it looks like that finishes that. Item seven, approval of the consent agenda, entertain a motion.
I moved that we approve the agenda. Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carries. That takes us to the regular agenda on the second page, halfway down. Item eight, present for approval, invitation to bid for the purchase and delivery of one 2024 Caterpillar 320 excavator or equivalent, and direct the clerk to advertise. Rob, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. That being able to not have to start compiling for 45 days has saved us quite a bit of money and headaches, so at least we've made it into January. And this, we'd like to replace, we have a 1977 excavator or track hoe, however you want to call it, and we'd like to replace it. It's actually becoming very outdated and getting parts forward, starting to be a challenge. And on this new one, we're asking for it to have a thumb on the, so you can grab things with it. And we have actually used our excavator probably at least five, six times with conjunction with the Albany County Fire Department for some of their cleanup. And having a thumb would be a great, great help. So anyway, we're asking to go up to bid for this. The money is in the 2010 spent. That's where it's coming from.
Commissioners, any questions for Rob?
I think it's a great idea. That one looks like a dinosaur.
Slightly younger than. We're not gonna tell you.
My graduation was.
Well, if there are no further questions, entertain a motion for item eight, please.
I move that we approve item eight as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thanks, Rob. Item nine, present for approval, per no quote from Civic Plus for content management solution and website hosting in amount not to exceed $8,655.60 yearly. Adam, good evening.
Hi, yes, this is our CMS website hosting charge. It's a yearly charge set, they do increment, it's about a 5% increase. This one had a slightly bigger jump associated to new products they brought up across the last two years. So they're just kind of annualizing some of that cost across it. Any questions related to the.
Commissioners, any questions for Adam?
I have them.
Nope.
Entertain a motion for item nine then, please.
I move that we approve item nine as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item 10, present for approval, quote from Dell Technologies for Microsoft EA renewal in amount not to exceed $62,016.15, Adam, please.
Year two of three of our EA renewal, again, slight increase from last year associated to expanded services that you guys approved last year.
Any questions for Adam? EA, could you?
Enterprise agreement.
Thank you. I entertain a motion for item 10, please.
I move that we approve item 10 as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 11, present for approval, letter of support for the Wammy Outdoor Recreation Grant Program through the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding for evaluation and maintenance.
We need 10A.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. 10 seconds, go, thank you. Forget that happened. Moved to 10A, a discussion about the Albany County Public Health flooring. Jennifer, please, thank you for the reminder.
Good evening, Commissioners. Anthony is not here this morning, or this evening. He, I know, I'm sick. It's been a long day. He was in this morning at 3:00 to plow, so he left today at 11:00 and couldn't make it, but he forwarded me all this information that he, yesterday. So with, as you know, we have been going with the mold remediation at Public Health. And in doing that remediation, when they went to pull the carpet out, underneath the carpet is asbestos tile. And as you're aware, asbestos tile is only a problem if you disturb it. However, this carpet is apparently glued down with the strongest carpet glue known to man. And a, or the restoration company, Allgood, initially said to Anthony, like, we don't want you to have to do asbestos remediation. We're gonna put some solvent on the carpet, which they have had previous good luck, where the solvent dissolves the glue enough, they can pull it up and not disturb the tiles, and then they can lay the new floor. We weren't that lucky. It didn't work. So at this point, we have to get asbestos remediation done for the rooms in which we have done the mold remediation, so that new flooring can be laid. Along with that, Kim has talked about, and I can't remember if we have brought it in front of you previously or not, about replacing the flooring in the additional WIC offices and clinic offices that were not affected by the mold remediation. However, given that we have asbestos tile in the rooms that we know about, it is likely we also have asbestos tile in those other rooms. There's no way to know unless they start pulling up the carpet, so they have not done it yet because we need to get your approval. So what you have in front of you with the lovely cupled tabs that I stuck off the side, if you look on the second page of what I gave you, it doesn't have a tab. There's an email from Anthony, and in there, he lists the bids that he got. There are, they recommend, they requested them from three companies. We only got response from two of those companies. All three of the companies were companies that Allgood has used in their jobs previously. Anthony said he does not necessarily have any experience. Oh, Anthony's on now. He just texted me and told me he woke up, I was like, we're going right now. So if you need to talk to Anthony, you can. Anyway, so what you have, tab one is the first four-room estimate from Extract. Tab two is the amount to add the second room. So the total that Anthony has there is the sum of tab one and tab two for the everything. Same with Carlisle, the pink tab is the four rooms, tab three, the purple tab, if you add that to the four room, you get the number that Anthony has in his summary. And then along with all of that, as on the number five tab, you have the estimate from Allgood to replace the additional flooring. As you can see in Anthony's email, his, given how much the cost was, given how much the cost was, Carlisle Investment has the cheapest quote to just do those initial four rooms, which is $13,210. Given the extent of the cost for the additional remediation, as well as then the additional flooring, Anthony was concerned about the money in the building account and all of those things, as you're aware, when we did the heat exchanger, I think, we had to, or the roof, we had to pull from.
So the heat exchanger we're doing out of courthouse renovation?
Yes.
And then the roofs and everything, the roofs will come out of the contingency, the building?
Yes.
And that's what this has been coming.
Yes, and Anthony's concern was, there's, with all of the things that we have had going on, what's in that building fund is rapidly dwindling. And so he, his thought was to just do the four rooms and the flooring in those four rooms in case something else comes up, there's still money in there that we're not having to shift from somewhere else. Kim, I talked to Kim earlier, so I'll let her give you the gist of it. Kim was going to have conversations today to see if she had money in budgets or in anything else that Public Health or WIC can contribute. And I don't, I'm not certain where.
Yeah, well, so, I mean, in my opinion, I would really think it's beneficial to do those exam rooms and these offices. You know, we had talked about doing the, like, I think the vaccine room, obviously we wouldn't touch that, but these offices and exam rooms that we would do, I notified Kristen and I asked her to at least start the email chain to see if maybe we could increase WIC's rent to get some funding, as well as looking at my budget to see if I can help offset some of those costs. Unfortunately, that grant that I have cannot do that anymore. So we all heard about that one, that was sad. But, you know, I just think it's important, we do struggle with, you know, we have little kids and moms coming in and keeping things clean and even not looking as old as it did. And we're already in, like, knee-deep in all this construction, so I would hate to, like, only do the four and then stop. But that's just what I'm thinking, and I will work on finding some additional funding somehow if I need to. So that's all I was gonna say.
Commissioners, any questions?
If you guys have a question. I have a question, I would comment that I think we need to do all of this now because we wait two months or four months, everything's just gonna keep going on. And we'll be ahead in the long run to get it taken care of. Hopefully, Kayla can help us shuffle some stuff around so that we can pay for it.
I mean, I think we're, we have what we've spent, I mean, we started with just $1,123,000. We had enough to do the roofs, so I mean, prior to even taking the roofs out of there, we had $677,000, and there's enough money in there to do it.
So I just did some quick math, because I didn't get that done before I got here. The difference between doing the required rooms and the additional rooms, plus the flooring in those additional rooms, is an additional amount of $51,902 and some change. Just so you have a number while we're talking to Kayla.
So are the tiles in the reception area, are those asbestos tiles still?
So the reception area has, like, the same flooring as the hall that was recently redone. It was before I got here, so at least.
Okay, I just couldn't remember.
Yeah, so just the reception area and the hallway have the new flooring, like, within the last, just ten years. But everything else is original to the building.
I agree with Terry. I might as well tear it all up at the time. I think also the fact that our contractors lit it bit slow and get things done, that may be the case down the line as well, right?
Yeah.
I'd rather see it all done at one time.
And I just think it's important, like, with the people coming in to our office, you know, is mold and being, like, I just would feel more about.
Well, it's a lot cleaner.
Yeah, right, yeah, okay, there you go.
And it'd just be disruptive again down the line.
Anthony, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Is there any, I know it's probably harder dealing with two companies than one. Is there a way to mix and match this? Or, and/or the other question would be, I'm sure you reached out to other people about getting that carpet off. Did you do that?
Yeah, we tried several different ways to get that carpet up without disturbing the adhesive that's under the tiles. But every way they have tried, it's still just tearing up that tile, and really the only way to do it is to have it professionally removed. And those two companies that I contacted, they're willing to start, you know, as soon as possible, but there is like a 10-day waiting period to get a permit with the state for asbestos removal. And that's, that's the only thing that's not so cool. But, but yeah, just, just for reference, I would love to get that whole room done. I was just kind of concerned, we've been spending a lot of money, and I didn't want to not have enough if something came up. We also have a combo air conditioning unit above the third-floor courtroom that needs to be replaced, and that's gonna be between 15 to 20 grand, depending on who we go with, just for, for future sake.
And it keeps, well, when it rains, it pours.
Yeah, thanks, Anthony.
Adam has a question too.
Yeah, Anthony, there was one that, a bid that didn't get through the spam blocker. I read real quickly there, didn't have a chance to read through this too much. Did you get that bid from the third company?
I still haven't got it yet. I'd have to check with IT again to see if maybe it had went through finally. But as of right now, I don't have it.
Okay, cool. And then Adam, you had your, you had something to add to this?
I was just curious if the newer flooring, we know if that got laid on top of the same asbestos tiling? I mean, that's kind of an MO for.
It can be. That's something they do. On occasion, I don't know if that.
Yeah.
Anthony's concern in doing that, at least, well, Anthony can speak, but his concern was it raises it that much higher, so you have a lip going in and out of the rooms and the hallway. And.
I'm not saying do that going forward, I was more concerned that you would get ripping into these, it would somehow traverse into the hallways, and then the new flooring, if you weren't expected, also has asbestos tiling under it, and then that has to go as well, because it's one of those either get it all or don't do it at all sort of. I don't, you know, someone strikes something wrong in the construction.
I would have to look, I believe there is a termination point at the transition piece, but I'm not, I can't remember exactly.
I feel like it has that kind of feel, you know, yeah.
And then tonight, Jennifer, Anthony, Kim, you guys need approval? And do we need to pick a contractor? What would you like us to do here?
So if we do need to pick a contractor, if you want to move forward with the asbestos removal in all of the areas, the less expensive contractor is Extract Environmental Services in the amount of $45,571.19. And then additionally, we need to approve what is in item five, which is the additional flooring quote from Allgood Restoration in the amount of $19,514.21.
I feel like at this point, I should be like, I promise I'll walk the dog and do the dishes.
I do not have anything waiting for Anthony in IT jail.
Okay, okay. Commissioners, do you feel like you have enough, or since there's nothing in IT jail?
Everyone else wants to call it.
Yeah, I like it. Anthony, anything else you'd like to, you don't have to, just want to make sure you have the opportunity?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? Not an entertain a motion for item 10A.
I move that we approve the asbestos remediation estimate of $45,571.19 from Extract Environmental Services, as well as the additional flooring for the offices, $19,514.21 from Allgood Restoration.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, Anthony, thank you, Jennifer, thank you, Kim.
Jennifer, thanks for this.
Item 11, present for approval, letter of support for the Wammy Outdoor Recreation Grant Program through the American Rescue Plan Act, funding for evaluation and maintenance reroutes of the school yard trail in the Pilot Hill Recreation Area. I've got Bailey and Sarah, oh, she's out there. So Bailey, it gets to you.
All right, so at the last meeting, Sarah came and discussed the project with you all. The deadline did get pushed back to the 24th, so next week, and we realized we forgot the letter of support from you all. So this is just the approval of letter of support for that same exact project she brought to you last time.
Will we spread, will we sign that tonight?
Yes, Kayla hasn't.
And all three.
All three signatures, please.
Thank you.
Just need to tell you on the last paragraph, there should be an on, contingent on a system. It says contingency system. Commissioners, any other questions? I entertain a motion for item 11 then, please.
I move that we approve item 11 as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item 12, discuss grant application to Wammy Outdoor Recreation Grant Program through the American Rescue Plan Act, funding for phase two of the youth sports complex, and approve the letter of support for the grant application, Bailey. Please, thanks.
Let's see, so this one, Laura, Taylor, and Laura are over Zoom right now, and she'll explain the project. I just want you to be aware that we did, I've been going back and forth with the state about the next, your next two items in regards to if these are eligible or not. One of the things that they've changed in this funding this time around is things have to be in the qualified census tract, which knocked out a lot of applicants across the state. Albany County is one of the only ones that has those qualified census tracts, which is great for us. However, where the field sits, where the fairgrounds sit, they are not exactly within those tracts. But with the help of our state contact, she feels if we make that connection, that they do help everybody in those census tracts, that we could probably get these approved. So that's just a, gives me a little background for that, and I'll let Laura just explain the project real quick.
Laura, good evening. Floor is yours.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. So as you guys know, we have our one grass field out there at South 287, and we've been looking for opportunities to continue to grow our project. And looking at this grant, we're going to apply to put in some expanded parking, as well as a small building that would house storage and restrooms. And then we're also going to apply for another field. This field, we hope, would be a turf field, so there'd be a little less maintenance on it. And just kind of moving forward with, with all the little pieces, eventually we'll want to have a building out there, so we're working the plans around having an indoor field at some point or another. I don't know if you have any questions?
Yeah, so you had said expanded parking, building, storage, that is, the bathrooms, and then another field is all good in this one grant application?
Yes.
Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for item 12 then, please.
I move that we approve item 12 as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Laura, appreciate it, good luck.
Thank you.
Item 13, discuss grant application to Wammy Outdoor Recreation Program through the American Rescue Plan Act, funding for new Crowsnest at the Albany County Fairgrounds Arena, and approve the letter of support for the grant application. Bailey and Taylor, Taylor, it looks like you're up, floor is yours. Good evening.
Good evening. So I've been working with Bailey to do the grant application, and like she said, we are just outside of the census tract, but we do serve those individuals that are within those census tracts. And our grandstands has been, they've, and our Crowsnest have been standing since the late 1960s, as best we can tell. And so it's time to replace the Crowsnest, it is unsafe, it's not modern, it's not really usable at this point for what we need. And so this is kind of a first step in, in part of our long-range development plan to upgrade and more, and modernize the fairgrounds.
Maybe that's, Crowsnest is just slightly younger than I am. Actually, actually, there was a remodel on it in the 60s, but I, it's been there since, like, 50s. It's a little, yeah, and that is old.
Yeah.
It's a little sketchy. It's very old.
Our newest building is 21 years old.
Wow.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Gotta hate to be the guy today, so the second paragraph, it just says crows. God, I hate to be the guy today. So the second paragraph, it just says crows. Um, there's no nest after it on the third sentence down. And then the stationary, it doesn't have updated uh commissioners on it. So if we can get it off the updated commissioners.
I bet you any.
You got the older.
You know, Kami re-uploaded, so you might not have actually uh.
Cause it, it does have Crows Nest. I put it in.
Okay, okay.
I bet that one's got to. Kami re-uploaded close to five o'clock. So if you didn't refresh your screen, you might be still getting the old.
Okay, good enough.
Yeah.
Uh, I move that we approve item thirteen as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here you see, none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Alright. Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you Bailey. Uh, thank you Taylor. Good luck. Uh, item fourteen, present for approval, request for proposals for providers to provide mental health support for the Albany County Sheriff's Office Critical Incident Mental Health Support Program. And direct the clerk to advertise. Sheriff, good evening.
Good evening commissioners. This is um a request for bids for our mental health program after um speaking with the state on state procurement laws. Um, we've redone this bid to where we could go ahead and send the bid out um to where if people wanted to bid on it, they don't have to bid for the entire amount of the grant on there. So we're able to, we still have to go to bid, but we can bid out portions of the grant and have multiple bid applicants to award to for this grant. We've had trouble getting this uh getting bids on this. This is the third time that it's going to go out because um we don't have anybody willing to take on the entire amount of the grant. The grant's a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars over three years. So.
So that's the reason why you're splitting up?
That is the reason why we're splitting. The grant was originally written to split up. Um the state accepted it, but then like I said, we, we found out through the state that their procurement laws don't necessarily match up directly with how the grant application was submitted and approved by the state. So this is the route that we have to go for, for this bid. We'd like to get it out there so we can get some folks, get some folks in and, and provide what we've requested through.
Commissioners, any questions?
Um, just one. Um, Karen, is this the um normal amount of time that we put out for bid? Um, you're starting the twenty-fifth, you're ending it uh twelfth.
Of February? Um, yes, that's about three weeks.
Is that sufficient?
That it should be sufficient time, especially since we're bidding it out. Like I said, we could bid out portions. So if it was for the entire amount like we've done before, it'd be about a month to five weeks out, which is what we've done. Like I said, we, I think we put this bid out in October and again in November. And here we are in January.
So guys putting it up just so if I were to people who would like to entertain a bid. Could, can they bid for the group work and then the individual separate? Or can they bid the individual or half the individual?
The bid is written for all options. So if they want to take one piece of the work for a certain piece of the time for a certain amount of money, definitely put that bid in there. If they wanna, if they want the whole uh whole amount, put that bid in. If they wanna, like I said, short amount of time, but all of the work put the bid in. So announce it far and wide. I appreciate it if you guys could help out on that.
Okay. Thank you for that verification.
We've struggled not only with sheriffs, but every time we've had to go out for mental health or psychiatric nurse practitioner services, finding providers in Laramie who have the time and their schedule to be able to commit and do all those census qualities really. So hopefully this will.
Commissioners, there are no questions. I entertain a motion for fourteen.
I move that we approve item fourteen as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here you see, none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item fifteen, present for approval memorandum of understanding between the Albany County Sheriff's Office, the City of Laramie Police Department, University of Wyoming Police Department, and Volunteers of America Northern Rockies for the Albany County Care Team Program from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twelve thirty. Sheriff, again, thank you.
Commissioners, yes, this is an MOU between all of the parties, UWPD, Laramie Police Department, Volunteers of America, and my office for what we're calling the Albany County Care Team, which is a co-response model that we are launching uh through all of the agencies. Uh, the MOU will allow us to not only share information, but um all three law enforcement agencies are um pooling a part of uh part of the funds to pay for a mental health professional to help uh with mental health calls in Albany County, specifically in three ways, screening calls as they come into dispatch, um providing any um help referrals, kind of all of the above, either in dispatch or going with deputies and officers on calls. And then also providing follow-up and wraparound services for those um that don't necessarily need um you know, a criminal nexus with, with their calls on there as well. So um all of us have, have uh signed the MOU. I'm the last one to, to get that done. Um, and the funding that is going to go towards the mental health care professional uh will be coming out of uh, out of my department's.
Commissioners, any questions?
Okay.
Karen, you all should be celebrated for working together on something that is a really useful strategy in other places has kept people who didn't need to be in jail.
Right.
That put them in a place where it was most helpful to them. Uh, I guess I'm sure you know, sheriff's deputies are probably not trained to meet people in a mental health crisis.
Yeah.
And so this is really exciting.
Yeah, we're really looking forward to it. Like I said, all of uh, all of our stakeholders here in the law enforcement community and those that are going to be able to provide those services for, for those people are all involved. And so we're gonna uh, we're doing it on a, not a full-time basis, kind of a, a part-time basis to start out with and uh modify it so that we can uh, you know, for the most part uh serve best the people in our community that, that need that help.
Well, uh, there are no other questions. I entertain a motion for fifteen, please.
I move that we approve that MOU uh between the three law enforcement entities and VOA of America for the Albany Care Team Program. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here you see, all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff. Really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Item sixteen, uh, on the third page of the uh, present for approval, funding agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany and Science Club's Art and Tough Guys for the fiscal twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. You'll be partner, one percent funding.
Uh, this is the last two agreements we're waiting for, but not one percent funding. Um, so the matches are again in your stocks that you have and this will be it for the FY twenty-four.
Commissioners, any questions? Not an entertaining motion for sixteen, please.
I move that we approve item sixteen as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here you see, none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries. Um and Tough Guys uh has kept that up past the first week of January. I just went by and it's still up. So and it's nice to have it in the neighborhood. Seventeen, present for approval, grant agreement between the State of Wyoming Department of State Parks and Cultural Resources, State Historic Preservation Office and Albany County Historic Preservation Board for the Hart Ranch Historic Preservation and Restoration Project Phase One project in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand nine hundred dollars. Bailey or Karen, I see you're up. Karen, why don't you start us out please? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Well, I see that Mary Hopkins is, is there. Um, she's the one who worked close list with the city on this grant application. All four of these grant applications that are before you this evening um were presented to you in October and we were lucky enough to um receive funding for all four of our grants. So um if you have any questions, I, I think Mary would be the best one to answer anything for you.
Mary, anything you'd like to add to that?
Uh, no, I, I don't think, I don't think there's anything unless you have questions about any of the particular grant applications. But we're really excited about these projects. Uh, we'll be doing planning with um the city and the county to do each one project and to get these kicked off properly in the county.
There are no questions. I entertain a motion for item seventeen, please.
I move that we approve item seventeen as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here you see, none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Karen. And I know you have a few more. Present for approval memorandum of understanding between the Albany County Board of Commissioners and the City of Laramie for the Albany County Historic Preservation Board for the Hart Ranch Project in the amount of seven thousand four hundred. Karen?
Oh, so you get me on this one. This is the MOU that I am doing between the county and the city because the city is going to actually manage this project. They're the, be going to be the ones who do it, but it has to come through the county and the Historic Preservation Board to get it done. I don't have all of the terms in that MOU finished yet. I will have it done. So we can pull it or it's very similar to the uh one that we did for Pilot Hill. That agreement where we passed it on to Pilot Hill. It's the same for the Hart Ranch one and also for the West Side one. But I don't have those terms all the way done. I had a question that I was asking uh at the city and I don't have an answer yet.
Commissioners, what would you like to do? Do you like to pull it or would you like to vote on it?
I'm comfortable voting on it now.
Okay. I entertain a motion if there are no questions for Jennifer.
I move that we approve item eighteen as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Or halfway presented.
Here you see, none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item nineteen, present for approval, grant agreement between the State of Wyoming Department of State Parks and Cultural Resources, State Historic Preservation Office, Albany County Historic Preservation Board for the West Side Neighborhood National Registered District Nomination in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars fifty-six cents. Hey Karen, I guess it's Karen.
Yeah, so nineteen and twenty are again um attached with each other. We're very excited about this one going through. Um, as I spoke to you in October, we did get our letter of support, but not only did we get our letter of support from the city, they have already approved the funding, which is their half um of the liking kind uh contributions. We have also started working with Bailey and as soon as this is approved, I believe we will be ready to send out um our requests for quotes so that we'll be in a position to move forward on this as quickly as possible.
Commissioners, any questions about item nineteen, please?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment.
Sure.
Um, Karen, when you were here in October, um and you had, were very careful in explaining that you had engaged everyone that you could possibly engage in this process. And I had heard a remark from someone that had said they were not included. So I went back and researched that and you were absolutely correct. Everyone was included and uh they're very happy with the, the whole process that you did. And so I just wanted to let you know that I did go back and research it and I think uh it was just a case of someone not listening quite as they should have. So thank you for all the hard work you've done on this and I really appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate that as well. We're trying our best to make sure that we try and engage as many of the stakeholders as possible. So thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? I entertain a motion for nineteen, please.
I move that we approve nineteen as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here you see, none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item twenty, present for approval memorandum of understanding between the Albany County His- County Board of Commissioners and the City of Laramie for the Albany County Historic Preservation Board for the West Side Project in the amount of eight thousand ninety-one dollars thirty-nine cents. Karen, I guess that's just our take from the county on this, on this piece. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's Jennifer at work over there.
Anything else you'd like to add before um we take a vote on this?
Uh, just be clear, this is the city portion of the match. Your portion will be put in my grant match budget line item um during budget because this project, excuse me, um is just slower starting. So we can wait to put those ones in for FY twenty-five. So this is just the city match in writing. Okay.
Thank you so much, uh Bailey.
Thanks.
Uh, any other questions? I entertain a motion for item twenty then please.
I move that we approve item twenty as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here you see, none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, I'll go same side. Motion carries. You've been busy Karen and Mary. Thank you so much. Uh, I really appreciate it and uh we've got one more here, it looks like twenty-one. Oh, we got two more.
Uh, yeah, you do.
Present for approval, grant agreement through this State of Wyoming Department of State Parks and Cultural Resources, State Historic Preservation Office and Albany County Historic Preservation Board for the NA PC Forum Conference Project in an amount not to exceed one thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars forty cents.
Yes, so um I was very happy that this came through. Again, it is training for myself, um but it probably is very good timing given all of the activity that we have going on um and will be flowing on from this. So um, yeah. I'm just going to be attending a conference.
Karen, was anyone else uh offered to attend this as well on the board?
Yes, and that question was asked earlier. I mean, it came down to an issue of timing and board, uh board members availability. Um, so uh we will continue to offer. Um, in the past, we have uh done grants like this um much closer in Denver. Um, and we try and make sure that our board members are given the opportunity um to be trained on an annual basis. It's just on this particular one, the board members um had conflicts and or, or just simply didn't wish to go.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion for item twenty-one, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-one as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here you see, none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Twenty-two, and then we're going to let you to your evening, Karen. Present for approval, grant agreement between the State of Wyoming Department of State Parks and Cultural Resources, State Historic Preservation Office and Albany County Historic Preservation Board for the Preserve Wyoming Project in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand two hundred eighteen dollars seventy-five cents.
Okay, so first of all, I would like to say that um we are extremely proud that SHPO reached out to us to put this on. Um, the Wyoming Preserves Conference has not been put on since two thousand and seventeen for a variety of, of reasons. Um, funding being one of them. Um, but we're very excited and so far the community, um, you know, the depot and, and the Lincoln Center and places that we are planning on, on having either events or tours have been extremely forthcoming to work with us on this. And like I said, it's going to be very exciting to hold this conference and launch it again. And it's also just an honor for our, our board to be selected to work with SHPO to make this happen.
Commissioners, any questions? Karen, you probably have, but if you had, uh, the uh tourism board here probably could be helpful.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, awesome.
There's no doubt. They're on our list.
Awesome. I'd entertain a motion for twenty-two if there are no further questions.
I move that we approve item twenty-two as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here you see, none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you Karen for your work. Thank you Mary for your work. You guys have been busy.
So much.
Alright, thank you.
You bet. Twenty-three, present for approval, updates to the Albany County Employee Handbook Regarding Health Insurance. Nisa, good evening.
Good evening commissioners. Uh, as you know, we, I have been working to revise the employee handbook. Uh, Bailey reached out to me last week with some specific language that the feds are requiring for some of her grants. So before you was just that language that they need for their grants. Uh, we needed to put this before you ahead of any of the other revisions that are coming so that we could stay compliant with the grant funding.
How does it look today, Nisa, for doing it short? Um, I got the call Thursday morning and we, I would have done that Thursday.
With your help. So it was a good team effort.
Nice.
So um on the handout, what is crossed out is what is currently in the. So, um, on the handout, what is crossed out is what is currently in the handbook, and then below that is the new revised language, so.
Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for twenty-three, please.
I move that we approve the updates to the Albany County Employee Handbook Regarding Health Insurance. Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Nisa. Appreciate it. Thank you, Bailey, for working with Nisa on that. Item twenty-four, take from the table, the Prairie Sun zoning district amendment application. I entertain a motion for that.
I move that we take from the table the Prairie Sun zoning district amendment application. Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item twenty-five, present for consideration, the Prairie Sun zoning district amendment application. Joe, good evening.
Yeah, so you guys tabled this item last meeting. Nothing's changed on our end, but I guess it's time to make a decision.
Any questions? Because I have a few.
Yeah, Joe, did you guys reach out at all to the city to get any information of what their plans are? If there's, uh, you know, plans in the near future to annex?
We didn't. There's none that we know of. They can't really.
And you haven't heard anything more from the city?
Nope.
Even just offering it up?
Nope.
So there's a strip of land between the proposed, uh, zoning. And on the applicant's map, it says residential. On our maps, it indicates agricultural. Does anybody know what that actually is?
The zoning?
Yep, on their, on their preliminary, their plat-like map, the strip of land is, it says residential. It lists a book and a page number.
Okay.
All our maps have it listed as agricultural.
Hang on, I'm saying it.
I think it was page two thirty, if I remember very certainly correctly. I'll get to it. Yeah, so page two thirty, right between this applicant's land and the state highway there.
Yeah, so I see where where you say it says zoning residential there. It is zoned agricultural. It very well could be assessed as residential. I'm not sure. But our maps have it as green, which is agricultural.
So it, so you're not sure if that's agriculture or residential?
Well, it's zoned agricultural.
Okay.
I don't know what it's taxed as, and that that gets confused all the time.
Is that something we see, like taxing designation on a zoning plat map?
Uh, not typically, but if someone got confused, then.
Okay. Also in the application, and you know, Mr. Ralph, you're you're here in the preliminary part of the application. It talks about fifteen acres and then a two, five acres and a ten acre, and then it goes back to fifteen acres. Could you explain to me what that means? Is it fifteen or twenty?
It's twenty. Um, there's been a couple changes to this, and clearly not every part of the report was correctly updated. But everything would be per the surveyor's map, which is twenty. That that is shown correctly on the map.
Thank you, Mr. Ralph. And so then my final question is, this seems to be two different zonings, right? So there's a commercial, and there's also a residential. Both are different in my mind. It would be better for me to be, have those addressed separately. Could you talk to me about why that's not necessary or why that might be necessary?
I guess because they both came in on the same application, so we ran them forward on the same application. Uh, there's nothing in our regs that say that they can't do that. So that's how we ran it forward.
And then the the final piece was the major street issue that you guys brought up in your staff report, not aligning with the commercial with, you know, coming off a major highway that they. Could you talk to me about that? What what's the ramifications of allowing this without that being part of this?
Yeah, so the cop plan calls for commercial coming up from a major intersection, which this clearly isn't. But if they were to go ahead and do the subdivision, they would have to reserve right-of-way at the very least for that, where that major street plant section goes. If they didn't want to build it, obviously, we would recommend them going in where the major street plant says it should go. But they would at least have to reserve the right-of-way there.
Thank you, Joe. And Jared, did you guys ever go to the city? This is a weird deal because it doesn't abut city land on the airport there, so it doesn't technically, in my understanding, be able for annexation. Did you ever talk to them about what what could be done with that?
It said the conversation began and ended with the railroad land there. They're not willing to budge on a lot of things. It took a lot of effort to get the easement across there. So that was the main discussion, was trying to get the railroad to agree to things across their land. So it would have to be a conversation between the owner of the railroad right-of-way and the city, in my understanding.
Thank you. And then just the final, last question for me. This, I struggle with the the plan we just passed with the city about the density and how this might not necessarily fit. And that was also the Planning and Zoning Commission, to my understanding. Their their recommendation was to come back with more dense zoning, if I remember reading that correctly. Could you tell me with that, Jared, a little bit, is that something interesting or not interesting?
It's not interesting because we wouldn't be able to do well-inseptic on the lots. That's the intended plan here, is to have well-inseptic, and to increase the density would mean we'd have to run utilities to the lots, which the client is not prepared to do.
Okay. My final one, I thought about this for the last two weeks. Is residential on a commercially zone, is that a legal use of commercially zoned?
So like a single family house, they would need a conditional use to put it on commercial. Um, but they could do multifamily on commercial without an additional use.
Thank you for that. Jared, any anticipation of doing multifamily on on the commercial piece of the of the property?
No, the commercial piece is intended for commercial use.
Okay, okay. Those are all my questions. I hate to have so much up in the air about this, and I hate to not vote for something without a path forward. There is a lot that I struggle with. Obviously, those things are things that I've struggled with. My my hope is that I would like to see this set back to the planning and zoning. Um, it broken up into two separate projects, a residential and a commercial, if that's possible. The commercial doesn't get much input from you guys on the staff report, which I really think that that's important because that is outlined in that growth management plan about that piece being part of the commercial piece that was designated. I know that's probably more work and and more effort for you, Mr. Ralph, your client, but being, uh, having some solution towards teaming up the growth management plan, uh, the growth. But the growth plan, and and this would be useful to me. If the city said, we're not interested in annexing, we don't have any solutions for it. That's a a nice outreach to the city, and then we can bring it back to us and say, okay, this is what they told us. And then we can make our decisions from there. But I'm just not ready to approve it at this point. Commissioners?
Um, as last time this came forward, I'm not comfortable with it either as far as, you know, we work hard on these various plans that we've done in conjunction with the city. And to somewhat ignore them and not consider them, at some point we're going to regret that we didn't follow our own growth plan. So I'm not ready to make a decision tonight, Joe.
Well, I would make a decision.
Okay. Any other questions for Jared or Joe? I've worn a mask. Sorry.
I mean, if I could make a statement, it's not, the the adjacent, the land that's adjacent to the city is not my land to offer up for annexation. That's my hangup. I cannot speak for the owners of the property to the south. That's, so I, you know, that's that's why I hesitate in going to the city where, because I would have to say, oh, you know, I have to get the the railroad on board and saying, you know, let's get your, we need your property annexed into the city for this strip here. And the, you know, that that kind of blows up the scope, but you know, the negotiation here. This isn't a matter of me just going to the city and asking, hey, does this follow your plans? This is, I gotta negotiate with a large company that, or a large landowner that's is the one that's actually adjacent. So those that those, that's just, you know, for whatever that's worth.
Yeah, totally. I, um, I, I guess I didn't communicate very well. Maybe the city's had that conversation. I wouldn't expect you to have a conversation with UP or whoever owns that land before you went to the city, but maybe go into the city and say, hey, this is part of our issue. Uh, you wrote a letter that was negative to this. What would you be able to do for this strip of land if this were to be annexable? Right, right now, it doesn't, in my understanding, it's not able to be annexed because of that stretch of strip of land. Maybe they have some solutions, because I I feel like there should be offered a solution from the city, or they could just say, we we don't have the ability to talk, or we haven't talked, or, and then that's good enough. I don't expect you, uh, for me, that's good enough for me. I don't expect you to make the deal with UP and the city. I don't believe that's, but I'd like to see, uh, reach out to the city and them to have skin in the game on this one.
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
So what are the lot sizes here?
Uh, five, five, and ten.
Five acres?
Yeah.
Well, that's not something that the city has for density. And so this landowner doesn't appear to me that he wants to annex. And it appears to me that this commission, other than myself, wants it to be annexed. And I think that's dead wrong.
Not saying I want it to be annexed. I want the city to determine what they, their.
It's in the county. This is the county's business. That landowner should be able to have his land, have his subdivision, without being what appears to me almost you guys forcing him to annex.
No, I'm I'm not forcing it at all.
Well, you are because you're, what what's the city have to say? What's the city have to say?
Well, and it's not adjacent to the city. Asking us to make that decision for them, and I'm not comfortable with that. I want the city to chime in on this uh, at a, at a more complete.
So every time you send this back around and around, it costs that landowner more money. Because when you do a development, you need to start the development and go with it. They've started it, and you're stopping it, stopping it.
That's a way of looking at it, Terry, but not the way that it should be looked at, in my opinion.
Well, I know what your opinion is because you'll hold up development any chance you get.
Well, Terry, my intent is is not necessarily.
We need to have development. We need to move it. And this is, this is a stall tactic against getting this developed.
Terry, there are plenty cities, one just right across the summit that is bound because of subdivisions that now ring it, and they have a hard time understanding where they're gonna grow their city. We did a growth management plan that the commission and the city council both signed upon. Now, we could have just thrown that money away, or we can actually pay attention to that plan. This plan, this zoning that's being requested, does not pay attention to that plan. It doesn't. Um, and should it pay attention?
But it has, it has exceptions in it. That's why. And you guys are hurting the developer of this.
We're just asking for some more information, Terry, and not making a decision. We're tabled, you know, we're looking at.
I I think, I think you're doing nothing but hurting this developer.
Fair enough. Uh, that that's clear. So I entertain a motion for item twenty-five, then.
I move that we, again, table this decision until we hear a little bit more of what the city's plans are and have the opportunity for them to maybe approach some of the entities that we discussed here tonight to get that further information.
Second. So moved in second. Any further discussion? Matt, can we keep ta, can we table this again?
Yeah. There's no restriction in the second position.
Okay. So moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, I'll go same side, please.
Aye.
That motion carries. David, would you reach out to Philip at the city, who wrote the letter? Um, and see if we can have a conversation with with Philip about some of our concerns. And if he needs me to address a letter that says, these are my concerns, uh, about your late, your statement, or please give us a solution for this person. That would be helpful. Would you be able to do that?
Do you like a letter from him or?
But I'd actually like to. Yeah, you can come to a meeting. That would be great. Yeah. Would you check with his calendar?
Philip's coming on the sixth to talk about the wayfinding, so.
Sixth of February.
He goes back on. A little words in his mouth, but he is coming.
He's here already.
Yeah. Okay, see if we can get him in on the sixth for the Prairie Sun discussion. Thank you, David. Thank you, Caleb, for reminding us that. All right, item twenty-six, present for consideration amendment to the Albany County zoning resolution, modifying the boundary of the aquifer protection overlay zone on the official zoning map and amendments to the that relate to future modifications of the boundary. David?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the approval of an amended aquifer protection overlay zone map based on the the maps that are found in the updated Casper Aquifer Protection Plan. And then there's also some text amendments that address the amendment of the of the boundary, as well as a process of somebody wants to do a site-specific amendment to the boundary. So the boundary has amended. The north, east, and south boundaries have not changed. Um, it's it's simply the the western boundary that you'll see the the changes to. What the Planning and Zoning Commission did was there was a recommended line from um, in the Casper Aquifer Protection Plan that, basically, so there's two lines. Let's, the first line, I think, I should describe first, is the protective satanga shell line, which was kind of an update to the western boundary that we have. Um, the western boundary that we have was based on where they thought seventy-five feet of satanga shell exist over the aquifer. So what the, what the consultant did when they put the plan together was they, they took that line and then they collected well data from the state engineer's office um, and verified that, found good data, and then moved the line according to where the well logs kind of had that. So they created this kind of wavy line, just a satanga, protective satanga shell line, from that data, as well as um, other features, like if there were springs in an area or other geologic features that they thought needed protection. They they may have moved the line that way. So, so there's that line. The the line that they, was proposed to be used, was they took that line and then moved it to the west of the protective satanga shell line to a surveyed boundary. Uh, survey boundaries such as a property line, quarter section line, um, something that's, that's surveyed and you can find on the graph pretty easily. Um, so that was, that's what you'll, you'll see in most of the maps in the Casper Aquifer Protection Plan. What, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission did was take the protectives to take the shell line. And where there was ample data from the well logs, they kept the kind of the curvy line. Where there was areas where they were missing well log data, um, they, they bumped it out to the, to the survey line. Because there's less understanding of where the line might be. Um, and so that's what you'll see is you'll see some areas that are kind of squared off because they're following property lines and the other areas where there's. More data from the well logs, so you'll see it's kind of a curvy line. Um, so that's what you're just gonna see there. Um, within the text amendments, you'll see, um, that there, there's basically two. It describes two processes to move the boundary. First is kind of the general process. Um, so if we're going to look at big areas or the entire line, um. They would, the process would be to amend the cap, the Casper Aquifer Protection Area Line within the cap. And then follow that with, uh, amendment through, um, the Minister's Procedures Act, um, as we change that. Um, the other method would be the site-specific, um, movement of the line. Um, that would, there's a, a process that's outlined and some criteria that they have to be. Based on the seventy-five foot crit- criteria, that was one thing that the cap reiterated is that is, is the. An important criteria to, to where we should put the boundary on the western boundary, because that's seventy-five feet, they felt. Was good enough to, uh, protect the aquifer. So, so it kind of describes those things. Um, so Planning and Zoning went through this whole process when we, when we. When they got to the point where they felt, felt comfortable with the line, um, we published that, um, our normal thirty days. As well as everyone along that line that was affected by, we sent a, a letter to, um, the. The address that we have on record, the assessor's office, so approximately forty-five, fifty people should have received a letter. On letting them know that that was, that was what was going on. Um.
And did you get any comments?
Um, I think I had one couple come in and they were just asking, and they, I think this couple had, was. Kind of following the process and I talked to them previous, but they just wanted to make sure, see what it was gonna do to their property and. So it was more, they just came in with questions, um, but that was the only response that I received, so. Um, nothing written at all, um, with, with, in regards to that, once we sent those letters out. Um, so, um, what you have before you is, um. The recommended aquifer protection overlay zone map, um, which will be amended in the official zoning map. As well as, um, the text amendments that kind of correspond with, with the changes and how to change that in the future. So, I would be happy to answer your questions.
If there's any questions. Matt, uh, just one question, uh, the line is definable. By a G I S data set, is that correct?
Yes, it'll be defined by the map that gets approved tonight, and we'll use that map and no other data sets. In the past, we've had issues with the other line because we've got lines that were drawn by the county G I S, the lines that was. They were drawn by the city G I S and they were all kind of all over the place and, um, we will have vision control and we'll have one line. Um, throughout G I S data set that we will follow.
Super. So I have an entertaining motion for twenty-six, please.
I move that we approve the amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution pertaining to the eight plus boundary on the official zoning map. And amending in the, in the process for future modifications to the boundary, seeing how we had been seen. Any comments tonight at the.
Second, it's been moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed same side please.
Aye.
That motion carries, uh. Item twenty-seven, present for consideration amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution pertaining to accessory dwellings. David?
Yeah, so, um, obviously we've seen a, a housing crisis across the nation. Um, and now Albany County is obviously not immune from that, and this amendment's not going to fix that either. However, um, in a small way, we think that, um, we felt that providing. For accessory dwellings on, on both properties would allow, um, for additional housing, which in kind of a small way. It does something towards, you know, being, being kind of positive towards, um. These issues and hopefully helping in some way. Uh, but the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval of these amendments. Um. These will allow for accessory dwellings on residential and agricultural properties. Um, these amendments include, uh, following the add definitions of principle and. Accessory dwellings as accessory dwelling to the land use table and add standards for the allowance of accessory dwellings in residential and agricultural zoning districts. Um, these, the purpose of these amendments is to strike a balance between allowing a property owner to add an additional dwelling. Um, to their property, um, with weighing that against the impacts to the, the surrounding neighborhood. Um, a few of the standards include a size limit for accessory dwellings. Um, the establishment of a minimum lot size, um, that a property owner must meet to have an accessory dwelling. Um, and that's dependent on the zoning district, um, for example, small residential zoning allows for one dwelling for two acres. So the minimum lot size would be four acres, thus meeting the, the density standard, but also if they have a four, four acre. Lot or whatever, they're, they're able to have that second dwelling on there, um, and then. We limit it to one accessory dwelling per parcel, um, and so, um. So yeah, that, that's kind of what you're looking at here. Uh, we did do a lot of research on this and, um. We feel like we've addressed many of the issues and there should be a good balance there between, you know, existing. Neighborhoods and property owners. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Commissioners, any questions?
Um, on the dwellings, what are the restrictions on that second dwelling?
What are the restrictions? So, um, one of the restrictions are that, um. They have to be, um, less than, or seventy-five percent of the square footage of the existing structure. Or twelve hundred square feet, so whichever is smaller out of those, so that's the size limit, um, depending on the zone, um. Like, I said, small lot residential, um, they basically have to still meet the, the density standard, so. So i- if, if the density says that they can have one dwelling for two acres, you have to have four acres to do that. So that's, um, one of the standards, um, another one is they have to ensure that. Their septic system will take the additional effluent if they're using, or like if it's within a building or whatever, like. They have a, a gar- garage, they want to convert to an apartment or something, um, the septic system must be able to. To accommodate that, or they'll have to put in a new one if they're, if they're doing a, a different building or something.
So. So if someone wanted to put like a duplex. Then they would have to have, they'd have to do a new septic system.
Yeah, if there's two in the same building, yeah, and they meet the standards that you have to cover. Yeah, so those are the big ones, I think, so.
Any other questions? Not an entertaining motion for twenty-seven, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-seven, it's been seconded.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed same side. That motion carries. Item twenty-eight, thank you, David. Present for consideration amendments to the Albany County Planning and Subdivision Resolution pertaining to subdivision access standards. Joe, please.
All right, so, uh, these amendments will require multiple accesses if a subdivision has thirty or more lots. Or if a subdivision will share a road with another subdivision and they provide numbers thirty or more lots. Uh, there's also an opportunity for a subdivider to ask for variance with these regulations. Um, if they provide a traffic impact study and they provide a written statement from the fire di, uh, fire district having jurisdiction. Um, and yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the amendments to the Albany County Planning and Subdivision Resolution concerning access.
If there's any questions? So Joe, in this case, if we had a plan to add and add two access points for this subdivision, that probably would have been helpful. A, a subdivision that could use that.
Uh, for the one we were just talking about, or?
Yeah, well, there's been a, a subdivision that's come that people have been concerned about.
There has been a subdivision.
Yeah, so if we had planned ahead, used a plan, we might have had a better subdivision as a result, is that correct?
Yeah, theoretically, yes.
I, I would bet just, because I bet it wouldn't, wouldn't be quite as slick as you'd think it's gonna be.
Okay, so, so planning, at least in this case, would be helpful, um. Any others ideas or any thoughts or questions for Joe? I entertain a motion for item twenty-eight, if there are no other questions.
I move that we approve the amendments to the Albany County Planning and Subdivision Resolution pertaining to subdivision access standards.
Second?
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed same side. That motion carries. Item twenty-nine, thank you, Joe. Present for consideration submission of a letter of support for the American Planning Association Award for the Learning Growth Area Plan. David, please.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, Logan Simpson, who helped us with the primary area growth plan, since we're talking about that, um, they. Will be submitting a application for this award, I guess, that's what you call it, an application, um. So for it's a small, a small town, um, and rural area award, um. And so we were just asking if to get a, a letter of support for that. Um, I've attached a letter, um, if you were amenable to approving this, um. And the clerk's office also has it in Word format and you can change whatever you need to, and I just need to get it signed and sent to one of this, uh, earth.
David, is this the updated one from, uh, since I submitted some, uh, uh, changes at the P and Z meeting? And there were some changes at all, is this the final one, or?
No, this is, this is a different letter. So there was one that was sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And one that was sent to more the county commissioners. They're similar, but not the same, so, um, if you guys are okay with that, I mean. We can, somebody could put you in charge of making it all look nice. She has.
Any other questions for David? Not an entertaining motion for, for twenty-nine, twenty-nine it is.
I move that we approve the submission of a letter of support from the American Planning Association Award for the Learning Growth Area Plan.
Second?
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Joe, thank you, David, really do appreciate it, um. Thirty, discuss to take action on request from the public defender's office. Jennifer, please.
So the Albany County Public Defender's Office, when we were doing the remediation and rebuild in the annex building and they. Uh, came in and talked to you, they're, they don't want to move back into the annex. So they have found space that they're renting on Second Street. Um, that they feel better meets their criteria. We have not gotten any kind of a request for assistance with rent. Or any of those things. At this point, as of maybe last Monday, um. The annex rebuild is complete, and those offices on that second floor are available to move back into. Uh, however, the request that I have from the public defender's office right now is, uh, they have. The Patty Bennett, who couldn't be here tonight, she was in Rawlins all day and just got back into town a few minutes ago, um, she asked. Me to ask you if the commissioners would be willing to pay for. The movers to move their things out of the existing annex building into their new rental space. Um, so they have two quotes for that. One of them is for. Just over eighteen hundred dollars from Cowboy Moving. That's an estimated, estimated quote. It may adjust based on actual time for. Packing and moving of things, and the other quote was for three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars from smooth movers.
What was the cowboy, what?
Um.
Eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred and one was the official estimate that is subject to adjustment.
And so, once again, you're gonna, uh, yes or no, and then who we would go with, right? Or, or do you want to leave it up to them, right?
Well, I, I was gonna say, I think, um. I think if we are going to authorize the funds, we should either specify a company or authorize an amount.
Yeah.
If that's what you want to.
Okay. And what's our legal obligation, uh, to the public defenders, uh? We're supposed to house them in a suitable office space, is that correct?
Correct, and, um. They, they have issues with all kinds of things that you heard about previously. We had, prior to this remediation, Adam had, uh, contracted with someone. For putting in an intercom system so the doors in that building could be locked, which would help with the security concerns. Um, the other concern that they had was ADA accessibility, uh. At one point, I had mentioned that, you know, if, if that was the concern, we could look at. Remodeling the base, or the bathroom on that main level to be ADA compliant, because there is, um, ADA access from that back. Little tiny back parking lot at the annex building into the building, and then potentially working with David's office to. Allow shared use of the conference room when they had clients who needed ADA accessibility. And when we were discussing all of these things prior to Christmas, they, that was not something they were interested in. They did not want to be in the building. So we have not, I have not gotten any information from anyone. Patty said she doesn't have it. She's like, that's above my pay grade. But no one from the state has reached out to request. Uh, a supplement from the commissioners for the rent that they're now paying. I can't tell you that that won't be forthcoming, but I don't have anything yet.
Is us approving moving expenses in mission that the, the office spaces aren't suitable?
Um, I don't necessarily think so. I think, I think there are things we could do to make those offices suitable. I hadn't discussed it with David, so this will come as a track, but at one point I had said, maybe we talk to the planning office and we move you guys onto the main floor and put. Planning upstairs and share the conference room or, and there was nothing. That they wanted to consider with regard to staying in that building. So I.
We could give them the whole building, put in an elevator, and they still aren't in rested.
Well, now if we did that, I don't know that they wouldn't be interested.
I mean, they're not, they're not being amiable or friendly about the building.
They did not, they did not want to stay in that building at all, and they were able to find additional space that I think. Was in the process of being remodeled and is being remodeled in a manner that suits their workflow and their rates, so hopefully it will work out well for them.
Adam, do you have to do I T, uh, work on their new building?
No, they're state employees.
Yeah, we are not, we don't support public defenders in any of that facets. Um, beyond assisting the state agencies from time to time, just as we cooperate in, uh, those tough communication classes.
Okay, cool.
So.
Jennifer, was anything itemized as far as these moving expenses to be such a difference?
Um, no, I think smooth movers, because theirs was a flat fee, they accounted for. The possibility of having to do everything and taking, you know, if we were real slow that day or if it was more difficult than we thought. And Cowboy Moving said, we're certain this is our base cost, and we've added some time in there, might be more. So, I think.
Cowboy Moving in storage has been here a long time. I've, I've numerous worked with them and. I'm very comfortable with them coming to my house tomorrow and.
When I have talked to a lot of people, when we were talking about getting estimates, or we did get estimates. When we thought we were going to move everybody out of that building into Beach Street, at least temporarily, I also reached out to both of her quotes, and both were. at least temporarily, I also reached out to both for quotes and both were, uh, helpful and responsive and all of those things. I think it's just, you know, where's your comfort level? Do you just want a set number and you're going to pay it regardless of what it takes you? Or do you want, like, here's your starting number and you know what's going to happen? So.
Just for the record, I just want to make sure that if we approve a vote, that we feel like those offices are suitable for the public defender or will be made suitable by the county. Um, and that there's no admission that they are not so suitable by, uh, approving a vote to be helpful and neighborly.
I, I think we can make that clear.
Okay, super. Well, I entertain a motion for item thirty, please.
I move that we approve item thirty as discussed. Second. And I would suggest cowboy moving and storage.
Second, great.
Second, please.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just for clarification purposes, are we paying the full amount of whatever that final invoice comes out to be? Or are you fixing a dollar amount?
Not to be more than with moving.
Okay.
Yeah. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. That motion carries. Item thirty-four, thirty-one, excuse me. Make appointment to the Albany County Predator Management Control District. Uh, there was just one person. Uh, his name is Lloyd Allen Doyle the fourth. I entertain a motion for that appointment.
I move that we make the appointment to the Albany County Predator Management Control District One Board with Lloyd Allen Doyle the fourth.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item thirty-two, executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A triple I. I entertain a motion, uh.
I move that we move into executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen dash.